City Council on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order at three P. M. Please join me for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know with the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Seeing no one is registered, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and the throngs of folks watching online.
Throngs.
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 Into today's meeting. We've got a productive agenda in front of you. I have one informal report on your agenda. It's IR two fifty-nine. Really pleased, it's an in-depth report, activities at animal services. Staff really put a detailed report together, history, production, very well done. Let me give a special thanks to Melissa Sheldon, our operations manager at the shelter. Melissa, will you just stand up and give them a wave? Yeah, Melissa's doing a great job. A relatively new addition to the team came from Georgetown, I believe, animal shelter, as well as Police Commander Gary Hyatt. Gary, I'm gonna make you stand up, too.
[laughter]
Gary's not new to the police force, but he is new to supporting Melissa and the animal services team, doing a great job. Both of those individuals, as well as Assistant City Manager Ryan Holt, put the report together. The, you know, the information that you got, it's seventeen pages, and it's really a story worth telling and knowing about. Because the history of animal services is a long one, and real proud of the work over the last five or six years that has been going on. And it's real hard to kind of boil down this seventeen-page report into one slide or a quick update, but I thought I'd show a chart that kind of tells the story of, you know, two thousand and twelve, you might remember, we were euthanizing close to sixty percent of the animals. So an animal coming into the shelter had a, you know, a four out of ten chance of getting out alive. Six thousand animals a year being euthanized out of the shelter. And just, you can imagine what being a staff member or a Humane Society volunteer was like at that time. It was not an easy role. But leadership from the city, Humane Society and others, and the community at large, really came together to say, let's solve this problem. And you can see how quickly it turned around, and you can see how we've continued to be successful over the years. I'll highlight that thus far in two thousand and twenty-three, we have a live exit rate of ninety-two percent, which is a few percentage points above the ninety percent number, which is the number you strive to be at or above if you want to call yourself a no-kill, a no-kill shelter. One of the things, as you dive into the report, though, you'll notice is we've been running high occupancy at the shelter for quite a long time now, and that leaves a pretty thin margin as it relates to being able to get the animals out into foster or for adoptions. And so I'll say that I'm very appreciative of the staff's work, very appreciative of our Humane Society team members that are there getting the animals out. It is not easy to do that when you're running so full. It puts a lot of strain and stress on you as an individual. So very deeply appreciative of our staff and the work that they're doing. So Commander and Melissa, please share that with our team members, let them know that we're proud of them. And I'll take any questions on that IR if there are any comments.
Yeah, City Manager Ford, thank you for highlighting that, and that was an amazing IR. I had a chance to read it in full today, and like you said, it does tell an amazing story, and that graph is a perfect distillation of what that story is and our journey to no-kill. I had the privilege of serving on and chairing the Animal Welfare Board, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, and served with the late Malcolm Duncan Senior, Malcolm Duncan Junior, and they really had put a lot of the city's emphasis in this. Wiley Stem served on that board, as did many others, and it was such a success story to see it turn around when the city took over. And in partnership with the Humane Society focusing on adoptions and renovation of the shelter and the passage of the spay neuter microchip ordinance was just truly a transformative time in animal services, and the success has continued. And I know our capacity issues are pressing and important, and we've had some unfortunate things like the distemper outbreak recently, but I think that all the, all the signs, as this chart indicates, are still that this is a true nationwide success story. So I want to thank our city management, animal services, and all our great city staff for their work, and the Humane Society for their partnership and good work with adoptions.
As I go there, I think every animal shelter in the country has, has really, based on what I've, I've heard since COVID, has really struggled, and it's really been a challenge. And so I think that we don't, we don't run from challenges, but definitely am proud of the data that's reported in this report, proud of the chart that's demonstrated here today. I know that this is some, an area that our staff takes incredibly seriously, and that our staff works really diligently and hard on, and cares really deeply to maintain not only this data, but the culture that has been cultivated here. So I celebrate that and look forward to seeing it continue through hard work and strategy as we go forward.
Thanks, Mayor and Councilmember, for those comments. We do have twelve public hearings, pretty good selection of public hearings today on the agenda, and Clint Peters will cover those later in the work session. We may cover those a little differently this time and take them out of order so that we can focus the time that Clint gets on the items that may have the most interest to council. So be aware, we may not take those sequentially today. We do have a total of twenty-one resolutions on the agenda, and I'm going to highlight three of them. First is Resolution two eighty-three, which seeks approval for a three-year agreement with the Cameron Park Zoological and Botanical Society. I am, I don't know, pleased may not be the right word. There's got to be a stronger word than that. I'm very happy to be bringing this forward to you today, and even happier to report that the Humane, or the Zoological Society approved the contract unanimously just a couple hours ago, and we are joined by Nancy Lacy here today, and, but real pleased to report that it has passed through their board. The contract really strengthens, further strengthens the link between the city and the society. It includes a term of three years, but it also includes options to extend for an additional two years if both parties agree to it. So it could be up to a five-year agreement. And a new component that we've added to the contract is a sort of a fundraising challenge or a matching grant program where the city will match dollar for dollar the donations the society raises, up to seven and a half million dollars. And this approach, which is new to us, would ensure that each entity, the city and the society, are aligned in our efforts to create new exhibits, as well as substantial renovations of existing exhibits, or even the establishment of an endowment to support the zoo. I'd really be remiss if I didn't say some thanks here. Mayor Meek jumped into this a few weeks ago, but certainly over the last two weeks, really has done an amazing job coming to the table, coming to the table with me and our city attorney as well. And then from the society's standpoint, Nancy Lacy and Larry James jumping into the table and, and really coming together to get this document prepared in preparation for this evening. Very much appreciate each one of those individuals, as well as other members of the city staff that made big contributions along the way.
I'll just start and say, first of all, really thankful for our team. Jennifer, thank you for all your work on this. Bradley, thank you for all your work on this. Our entire city staff, thank you for all that you've done. I'm really, to, and the society, thanks for all you do for our zoo. I think that we have, we are united in a love for the zoo, but I think that what I'm really excited about is this is a contract where the city and the society are united, both with a common vision for our partnership, but also for the zoo, most importantly. And I just believe the future's incredibly bright at the Cameron Park Zoo.
I'll just jump in you, too, and echo. I think I said all the great things last week when we were talking about this, but I'm glad we came to resolution, and it's, society's such a valuable partner. And Nancy, I want to, thanks for being here, and I appreciate everything you've done, like I said last week. A lot of us older people can remember when the zoo was a bunch of cement jails out next to the airport. And the society was so integral in getting the Cameron Park Zoo established and running. And it's, and I'm happy that we've come to agreement here. There's so many great things going on at the zoo now, and are excited to get these, the Penguin exhibit back on, you know, on track, and everything is working great, very exciting time at the zoo. And just Nancy Lacy, Larry James, Debbie Sartan, Nell Hawkes, I'd name twenty people that have been, or fifty, that have been very integral over the last many, many years on, on getting the zoo in the great shape that it's in. I just want to express my appreciation. Glad we have a good agreement.
Yeah, I too recall the difference between the zoo that I visited as a child coming up from Colleen and the zoo that I've taken my own children to is just night and day, as Councilmember Holmes said. And I know Councilmember Horner has expressed that this is truly a crown jewel for our community, and I, I share that as well, and I'm, I'm just grateful for Nancy Lacy, the board of the society, the society staff, our city staff, and this council, our city manager in getting this worked out, moving forward with a closer working relationship. And I think there's a lot to be optimistic and confident about going forward as we build out these, the bond elections facilities.
I'd just like to say one thing, that I am really proud of the effort that every person involved in this made. They did yeoman's duty in reaching agreement, and I think it marks a new, a new day in the relationship between the zoo and the city. And it will, I think communication regularly and face-to-face will make, make this the best relationship that we've ever seen before, and will continue to make this a zoo we can all be proud of, and I thank everyone involved.
Also, I want to thank the city staff and the zoo, Zoological Society, for coming together for the betterment of the city of Waco and all visitors that are coming to visit the zoo. It is a crown jewel, as Councilman Horner said. I got a personal tour by Johnny Bender, and it was awesome. I took my two grandchildren with me, and they were so impressed with the giraffe and the white rhino. But it, it is a beautiful place for people from all over to come and visit, and I'm glad that we came to an agreement with keeping it and making it the best zoo ever. And I'm real excited about the Penguin exhibit, anxious to see it come to fruition. And with that, I'll just say thank you to everyone concerned that came forward and made sure that the citizens of Waco and McLennan County have a beautiful zoo to come and visit.
I'll echo my council members and say I am incredibly appreciative for all parties involved, and, you know, we, we oftentimes say that we go from A to Z, which is airports to zoo, and everything that we do is in excellence, and the zoo is certainly evidence of that. It takes many people to make this thing work, from a staff perspective to our dedicated volunteers and people who give of their time and their money to, to make this what it is, which is one of the best zoos in the country. It took time, but I'm glad we made time, and that is even more evidence of who we are as Wacoans, to see it through to the end for the betterment of our city, our community, and whatever it is that we're dealing with, and in this, it is an impeccable zoo. So we thank you for all the things that you've given your time and your effort to uplift one of our treasures.
Thanks, Council, for those comments. The second resolution I wanted to highlight is Resolution two eighty-five, which seeks approval for incentives for Waco Rowing Center for a cumulative total of eighty-five thousand dollars with forty thousand dollars to cover the Texas Rowing Championships, which I believe are this weekend.
Weekend.
Yes? Yeah, okay, somebody's nodding at me. The, the Rowing Championships coming up this weekend are expected to bring thousands of people to Waco and McLennan County, as athletes from approximately thirty different clubs and schools will be here, and the estimates that are shown in your packet are that we'll have upwards of a couple of thousand room nights booked, which is, that's a big event for our market. Staff has provided in your packet the return on investment calculations to support this level of incentives, and that details the impact that the prior events that the Waco Rowing has hosted in Waco, and that's an exciting report from my standpoint, because it says as, as rowing continues to grow in Waco, you know, there's, there's an economic impact that's significant to our businesses happening. I want to say a special thanks to R. Shay Cooper and Matt Schorchel from Waco Rowing Center. These individuals are working hard to impact the community, both on a, on an economic level, but also on a personal level, so very much appreciate their work.
This is so exciting for so many reasons. I've said this before, my mama used to say all the time that when Waco would really stand in her greatness, when she utilized all her assets. And I mean, you have people man-making rivers these days, and so when we have the excellent bodies of water that we have in our community, the lakes, the river, and them, them being utilized, just in its natural sense, is important. Then add the economic impact to it, and all the things that have been proven in the past event, and that Waco Rowing has, has accomplished is phenomenal. But it's giving our young people an opportunity to do something they've never done before. The increase in, in excitement in the communities, in the schools about rowing presents other opportunities to, for scholarship that may not have ever been conceived, conceived before, but it's there, and they're doing a great job at reaching our young people. I know La Vega is all in. I am anticipating that our other schools will follow suit. They're learning to swim, people who have never done that before, and thanks to the Cooper Foundation, they, those swim lessons are paid for. So these are things that are not only benefiting us from a financial perspective, but these are bettering our, our children. This is bettering our, our city, and so I'm super excited about this and can't wait to see, can't wait to see what's next. I mean, we have our own stars, right? But, you know, it was a pretty huge deal that Mark Cuban was here to watch his daughter row. And we would like him to spend some more money in Waco, so.
[laughter]
So, I mean, these are things that we want to keep happening, so great, I'm, I'm fully supporting, supportive of this.
I can't say it better than Councilmember Bearfield, but this city has longed for the river to be fully optimized in a way that both our own community would deeply realize, as well as people from outside of this community, and this is another layer to that dream, that call being fully realized, and it's really meaningful, enjoyable for us to get to, to see that come to be, be a reality.
All right. Last resolution I wanted to highlight is Resolution three oh one, which is talking about the river a little bit and water. This resolution does seek your approval for a contract amendment with C. D. M. Smith to add the development of an integrated water resource plan for an additional, an additional three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The integrated water plan is what we presented, or what Lisa Tire, our Director of Utilities, presented at the city council retreat on April eighth, and as a reminder, this is just a really essential task for our staff to complete between now and the end of two thousand and twenty-three, as we seek to prioritize investments that extend our water surplus decades into the future. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for today, and I'll take any questions you might have.
I'll just comment on that three oh one, because I'm glad you pointed that out. I was going to comment on it anyway, but the, I like how staff pivoted into this amendment, because I think our original contract was just to kind of evaluate water demands, and we pivoted into a, a scope that talks about where new water supplies could come from, do a more thorough evaluation of Lake Waco, and it's what resources we have there, and also initiate permitting for the reuse of water supplies. I think what's happened in the last six months, three to six months, really necessitates being very active, and appreciate how active staff is in dealing with this drought and with our water supply in a proactive manner.
Yeah, I, I think that we are riding on cocktails of leaders who've come before us who really were strategic thinkers and planners when it came to water supply, and that is what our hope and intention is in doing this, is that seventy years from now, there might be some city council who has no idea who we are or what our names were, but they're thankful that we were thoughtful about the long-term water needs of this community. And I think this is incredibly important work, giving the anticipated growth, not only for Waco, but Texas in general. So I look forward to seeing this done, and really proud that we're thinking about our future in this way. And that is everything. I don't know why I'm pausing, like Bradley's going to go to another, another highlight. Okay.
[inaudible].
I like pause, let the future sink in.
A lot of gravity there.
The consent agenda includes Resolutions two thousand and twenty-three, two eighty-three through three oh three. Are there any consent agenda items that council would like to pull?
Mayor, I'm proud to announce I don't have a single conflict of interest to that.
No, there's got to be, got to be one, let's find one.
I don't know what happened, but it just feels good. It feels good.
It's your day.
You got, you got to clap for me.
Next item on the agenda, our work session items, two thousand and twenty-three, two sixty through two sixty-four. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure, Mayor. I want to start off with work session two sixty. This is a discussion of the development review process. I have Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, coming up to make this presentation. I think he got a little frustrated with me last week.
Mm-mm.
Did you, yeah, you did. I emailed the PowerPoint that he's showing to a bunch of builders and developers, because we are, we are trying to increase the level of communication with those individuals, and so Clint gave me a stink eye one time about it. But Clint's leading our effort here, and he'll cover this, but one thing to always keep in mind, Clint's only one piece of the development puzzle. There are other team members that support it, including other departments and other even outside agencies that support the development process. So definitely I'm proud of the work that he's doing and leading this, and also proud of the work that others do to support him. Clint, you got the mic.
Sure, thank you, Bradley, Mayor, City Council. Bradley's right, we do have a great group of employees that work in the development process all through it, and then also great partners with the Heart of Texas Building Association and Association of General Contractors that work closely with us on all things development. So what I wanted to talk through on this presentation was a little bit about the development process, what it involves, who, who's involved with it, give you a little bit of data, snapshot of where we are, and some numbers on what's all happening, and then some items of improvement that we're looking at, to try to improve the development process all through the different stages of it. So here's, here's our little circle of life, development process, circle of life over here, and it goes from everything, from our long-range planning efforts, comprehensive planning, down to our entitlements. As you can see on our agenda, we got twelve public hearings tonight, so there's a lot of development in the pipeline, and those are all things that have to go through this entitlement process, and include zoning, annexation, plat review, abandonment, all those different things that y'all see in your public hearings are all important processes that start that development cycle. And then construction plan review, making sure new development has quality roads, drainage utilities that meet the needs, not only of the new development, but that it's not going to cause any issues around surrounding development. We then get into our building permits, and that's everything from new construction to remodel to electrical plumbing, HPAC, grading, signs, parking lots, everything you can think of goes through a permitting process, make sure it meets our building codes, and it's safe for our residents once it's ultimately finished and can be operated and occupied. And we do a lot of different things with business license, short-term rentals, alcohol, indoor amusement facilities, open-air vending. A lot of these things are relatively new. Short-term rentals is still a new industry, and, and so there's been a lot of effort and staff time devoted to that, that, you know, ten years ago wasn't, you know, a thing. So we've had to adjust to that, and you'll see some of our implementation strategies on dealing with that, and so we can provide good customer service there. And then working with Public Works, we have a lot of right-of-way permits, and that's anything that requires a permit from sidewalks to driver approaches. We do have a lot of different groups involved in that review process, from our Development Services Department, which includes planning, our permitting and inspections, and then even co-compliance is involved with some of the licensing permits. Public Works, looking at traffic in streets, they look at stormwater management, they're involved with pretty much all, all levels of development, from the entitlements to the permitting to inspections. Public Health and Safety, Police and Fire Department, and then the Health Department making sure the buildings and our infrastructure are safe to use, solid waste. Parks even gets involved when we have new developments, planning for parks for new growing areas, and then, you know, developments along the river corridor, making sure we're connecting those developments into our parks. And then numerous outside agencies, Tech dot encore, Atmos, McLennan County, and then all the phone and cable companies are involved as well. So here's a, some data on permitting in the last five years. We've been really busy. You see, two thousand and twenty-one was our peak year with almost ninety-five hundred permits. To give a little bit of perspective, it's not on the slide, but ten years ago, we were at about six thousand permits, so we're, we're looking on average about thirty-five percent more permitting, permits issued in the last ten years. And then this breaks it down from the types of permits, from building permits, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. And then inspections, I had to check these numbers several times because it just is mind-blowing, but two thousand and twenty-two, we were at thirty-two thousand inspections done in one year, and that from two thousand and thirteen, we were about twelve thousand, so that's about two and a half times as many inspections, which breaks down to about twenty to twenty-two inspections per inspector a day. And so, you know, one of the things we're looking at is providing them some more resources so not only they can get through their daily inspections, but that, you know, they're able to spend the time with customers to make sure that we're doing a good job on the inspections and people understanding it. Some more general permit trends, everything is trending up from last year in our major permit categories, except for single-family new construction. And you see, we are down about thirty-four percent from last year, but last year was our record all-time high. We had sixteen, almost seven hundred new home permits, and so even though we're down this year a little bit, we're still, that, that being down thirty-four percent is about right out of our five-year average. You know, I, I think most likely that, that is an indicator of the impact on interest rates on, on mortgages and new starts. But all our other categories are trending up, commercial new construction, commercial remodels, finished outs, residential remodels, and our trade permits. Valuation for commercial permits for just for the first six months of this year is eight hundred million dollars worth of projects that have been. $800 million worth of projects that have been permitted. And you can see from Foster Pavilion and Riverfront to Baylor's Practice Facility, Graphic Packaging, WISD projects, and Waco Family Medicine. These are all great signs, great projects, but they are, from a permitting and inspection and development process, they are a little bit more involved and take more time to get through the process. And then, you know, something that we don't think of much, but that's had a big impact on our capacity in permitting inspections is alternate power source permits are trending way up. These are our solar panels and our generators, and just in the last 18 months, we've had over 500 permits of those, and the three years before that, we were only at 200 permits. So a big increase in those as well. And so what that's led to, the, the work demand is we are not hitting our, our goals, performance indicators on permitting and inspections, and, and these are our three main ones. We, our, our goal is to get 98% of inspections within 24 hours of the request. This past year, we're trending down, we're about 94%. And then our commercial plan review comments, 90% within 20 days, we're, we're off that about 60%. These are a little bit more volatile because there's not as many of them, so, you know, one or two that we fail to meet can make that number fluctuate quite a bit. And then our residential plan review, our indicator was for plan approved within two days. We are off of that, we're about 80%. We're, we're looking at changing this indicator because of our new residential design standards, there's a little bit more back and forth, especially on some of the infield development, and so I think we're looking at potentially changing that to comments back within two days. And so that, you know, that number can be more reasonably met. Some of the things we're working on to get back to where we want to be on those is working on our communication efforts. I mentioned our partners earlier, they've been real helpful in setting up with the Heart of Texas Building Association, they've, they set up a quarterly meeting that we meet with them and go over all things permitting. Those have been, I think we're, have done three so far, those have been real productive. We've even, have already changed some of our sequencing on inspections to meet some of their supply delivery standards and how they move forward with their projects. And I, I see more implementation strategies coming out of those meetings, those have been real helpful. And then Association of General Contractors has been working with us, and they are going to host some electrical inspection workshops coming up at the, in April and in May. That slide I showed you of the number inspection, one of the, the big categories of that is electrical inspections, and we've been digging a little deeper into those numbers, and what we found is about 38% of our electrical inspections are failing that first time, and so we're having to do re-inspections. And so the goal of these two meetings is to, you know, identify why inspections are failing, talk through those, and hopefully lower that number. You know, our, our goal, talking with some of the leadership from the Association, AGC, is cutting that number in half, which would equate to, you know, about 2,000 less inspections a year, which benefits everybody involved, from the ultimate customer to the contractor to the GC to the staff. So we're, we're really excited about these opportunities to improve our coordination with the community, development community. One of the good things about COVID, we started doing, we, we've had a monthly developers meeting for a decade plus, and that's always been in person, and we've been able to expand that to a hybrid meeting, so we're getting more participation in that meeting. People can still come, but we can also, they can also jump on, you know, the hybrid and participate virtually. And then we're also working on a, a development newsletter that will help spread information out on things that have been worked on. We have offered third-party inspections for larger projects. This, this has been where the builder would contract directly with the third-party. Amazon used that with their facility. We are expanding, potentially expanding third-party inspection. We're finalizing a contract with Bureau Veritas, who's a third, a third-party plan review and inspection company that could help fill that gap when, you know, the, the city can't get to permits at a time of the matter, inspection at a time of the matter, that they would actually do the inspections for the city. So we still gotta work out the details of that with our partners to make sure we're not having any unintended consequences, but we are going to start using this as a, as a tool to help expedite these functions. And then we've also been working with a company, nonprofit company called Solar Plus App for solar system plan review. They're a nonprofit that promotes the use of solar throughout the country, and they actually have programs with city, where they'll, they'll actually do the plan review for the systems for free for cities to, to expedite that process. So that, that number I was talking about, that 500 of lasting 18 months, that would be offloaded from our staff and done by the Solar Plus App, so we're excited about that. And then we are looking at a, going through the process of implementing a new permitting inspection software. The, the one that we're currently using is not providing the level we need it to as far as usability, notification, and just easy use, and it's on both sides, both the, the user and the city side. So we actually just got proposals submitted in the last week or so, got nine submitted, so that's a good sign we'll be able to get a robust system and use technology the way it's supposed to be used. We are, we do have four representatives from the development community that will be on that selection committee, so, you know, obviously we wanted to make sure it works both from the city standpoint and the customer standpoint. More on the entitlement side, we are looking at our subdivision ordinance to streamline and simplify plat and construction plan review approval process. A lot of cities have changed their ordinance to have it where the plan commission approves those. You know, what currently ours is plan commission and city council, and so one of the things we're looking at is taking the city council part out of the plat approval. We do, and, and then we're looking at streamlining the, also the construction plan review. You know, we had to react to House Bill 3167 several years ago, so we had to change our subdivision ordinance kind of on the fly to meet the legal requirements in there, and now I think there's been enough time and we've been able to look at what other cities do, and I think we're at the point where we're ready to provide some amendments that would approve, improve that process. We have already reached out to our stakeholder groups for input, both in March and April, and then we plan to bring that to the plan commission and city council in May and June. And one of the other things we're looking at is video inspections. I know video is probably not the term you use now, but where you can do re-inspections or inspections, you know, from the office, you don't have to actually be on-site to do that, which again would speed up that permitting process and cut staff time and, you know, the, the user's time down on that. So we're, we're looking at that, and then I did mention about the reviewing the proposals for a new permitting system, we do have the nine. And then finally, the last thing, we are in the process of onboarding Avenue, which is our new STR licensing administrator that council approved several months back, that will be taking over the STR licensing and administration process, which will free up a lot of our staff to, to work on the things that they're used to working on with permitting, licensing, other items on licensing. So we're excited about that. There'll still be a lot of staff involvement with that, but not nearly as much as the full administration process of that. So that, that should be up and running within the next month. And then finally, the, the council graciously, graciously approved some money for us in this year's budget to hire a consultant to look at our development process review, to do a, look at it from kind of outside source and give us some recommendations. So this is something that we'll start working on, we've had some discussions with some of the firms, several cities have done this recently, and they, they get a really good list of recommendations on how to improve their process. So one of the things we, we want to get out of that is, you know, survey data from our customers, you know, that would be, you know, third-party wouldn't, the staff wouldn't see it, but be able to identify key priorities for development review improvement, so make sure we're concentrating on the things that are needed and important to our customers, you know, evaluating our application and permit process, you know, looking at best practices from other cities, and then establishing customer-focused improvement goals and actions based on that data. And then, you know, looking at that, you know, if we, when we start using third-party, what's the, a good mix, the correct mix of, you know, implementing that with our full-time staff to meet specific needs? And then looking at our key performance indicators and data to make sure, once we've identified goals, that we're meeting those improvement goals along the, along the way. So we're just starting the, the first of that process and looking forward to having that done, you know, by the, the end of the year. And with that, I'd take any questions or comments.
I'll just say, Clint, thank you for the presentation, and I'm fully supportive of the thoughtful review of the process. I mean, this is exactly what we need done, we've, we want to provide best-in-class services in this part of the city, and want to be very responsive and collaborative and figure out the best way to do things in our growing economy. And the, the one graph you showed where the inspectors went from 13,000 to over 30,000, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's just amazing, and I guess it points to, and you're, I think you're clicking on all cylinders here on finding the right solution, I like your approach, but the people and the process and the systems are what we need to be looking at, and how do we, how do we evolve, how do we continue to improve there? Great data, looking at, at some of it there. I, I like how you're focusing on KPIs, and hopefully this new software that we're getting will allow us to kind of have a standard KPI report on where the inspection was, what kind of inspection was, how long did it take to get to the, to the inspection, how long did it take to complete the inspection, and permitting, and be looking at more intuitive sort of data where we can respond, which, and again, I applaud you and commend you for, for this approach. A lot of it is evolving needs too, because you brought up the generators and the solar panels, and I'm, and I've gotten quite a few calls for the generator deals, was that, those things weren't even on the radar, you know, two or three years ago, and so now we're, we're having to incorporate that into our whole city service system. So I like how you're thinking about new, new projects. I like how you're meeting regularly with the Heart of Texas Builders Association, great group out there, and I know you've got a great relationship out there, and they, they speak highly of you. I was, I was intrigued by that data that 38% of the electrical was failing on the first inspection, and that we're trying to figure out a way to, something's not connecting there.
Right.
So I, I, and I don't know what the problem is, you'll figure it out, but I like how you're at least focusing on, and I think when we see these KPIs, we'll, we'll have a better idea on where to, where to concentrate our efforts within the, within the new software. But in general, yeah, I think we're on the right track here, and I really appreciate it. It's always been kind of a, the whole permitting and inspections, where you have the amount of volume that we've had in the last five or six years, it's been a good problem to have that we've got, that we have, that we have that kind of growth. And one, one of the point here, I like how you're thinking about outsourcing the inspection process. I mean, it's hard to, I know that we've approved these positions to get more people in, but it's hard to hire them, right? I mean, you, I think, I don't know how many down we are right now, but.
Yeah, we're, we're down one electrical inspector right now. So that, that is an issue, you know, with staffing, and then, you know, really I think using the third-party to supplement and fill in the gaps that staff can't get, get to.
Fully supportive of that, and I think it's all my comments, but yeah, good, it looks like we're on a good track here. Appreciate your work, Clint.
Thank you for this report, great report. The volume is just unbelievably wonderful, but it brings its own issues, and I really salute you for this customer-focused effort in trying to get your customers to be quick to tell you what challenges that they have so that you can make adjustments and, and eliminate those. And the less complaints you have, as you well know, the better, the smoother this will work and everything works a little faster. So thank you for that customer-focused piece.
Yeah, I also want to chime in and appreciate your good work. Clint, I know we've worked together for a long time, and I know that you're well-respected in the development community and the builder community, and so glad for those relationships and this kind of optimizing, to use some buzzwords here, optimizing and streamlining our processes. Grateful for that. I also am excited about the solar. I've, I've had a, a number of folks hit me up about our solar permitting processes, I know Councilmember Holmes has too, so excited about that getting kind of more standardized and user-friendly as well, so appreciate your good work there too.
Clint, I appreciate this report. I've been on council a long time, and I don't remember us ever getting something like this, and maybe we have and I just forgot, but I'm glad that you and Bradley worked together to get us this report and this data. You know, the, the complaints I get is, well, they said the inspector was coming and he didn't get here. We understand why, you know, and it looks like you're addressing that issue, and, and so I appreciate that, because every time I thought, well, you had the answer for my questions that were already in my head, but thank you for that, and, and I know staff is under a lot of pressure, has been under a lot of pressure to get to what, where they need to go, and sometimes our customers are not very friendly towards our inspectors, and I know they have to put up with that, but I appreciate staff and our inspectors and everything you've done to bring this up to date to us so that when we get phone calls, we have an answer for them. So thank you for that.
Sure, you're welcome.
Excellent, I appreciate the updated information. With the level of growth that we're experiencing, the struggle is understandable, and, you know, how we find solutions intentionally and with our, our, our customer in mind is, is important, so I appreciate the work that you and your staff put into this. I am agreeing with everything I see, including using outside parties to, to take up some of this slack. Only thing I want to ensure is that the level of customer service that is delivered from our staff is extended and, and managed and evaluated by those who are not necessarily a city of Waco.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they, they may be their own entities, but they're going out on behalf of us, and I want to make sure that the level of integrity that we put out is maintained by those who are chosen by, as a third-party to be a vendor.
Yeah, I think that this, this report and where we're headed really speaks to, I think, the culture of this community, which is to want to grow smartly and want to have good customer service and want to be strategic problem solvers. I just hear so many reports, I, I hear complaints at times, but I hear so many reports of really great people in our development services process, from Clint, you, I hear about the legend of Gary Davis all the time, and how he's a, a problem solver and gets things done, and so many others doing really good work, and I know, and it's evidenced from this report, there's a lot of creativity that's already being implemented to really try to have great customer service, and I see some different builders here today, thankful for each of you and your care and concern for our city, and addressing city issues like growing our economy through commercial spaces, addressing a lack of housing through increasing our housing supply and housing stock. So thank you to our building community, I mean, especially those who are here today or, or watching online. You know, I, I think all of us want the same thing, and that is to have a really great department that ensures that we have this right balance of making sure we have safe structures, because when buildings crumble or because of bad inspection burn up, we get looked at for that. But on the flip side of that, we want to have streamlined and efficient processes that ensure that it's, Waco's a great city to develop and build in, and so I think the goal is this, this right balance, good official. in. And so I think the goal is this, this right balance, good efficiency, good processes. And I'm really excited about this, this review. Look forward to seeing any gaps that, you know, from a council perspective, we need to evaluate the budget in terms of how to resolve that and work with our team. I think, thankful for Bradley for greenlighting this and, and getting this forward, because I think that we definitely have a team up here who wants to have the, the right culture. And looking forward to seeing this. One quick question I have is, is there a timeline on the video inspections that we're looking at?
So, yes, we're, we're looking at options right now. So it's, it, that's something that's, we're trying to implement fairly quickly.
That's great.
Like in months.
In months?
Yeah.
Like ballpark? Sorry, I don't want to push it, but...
Two or three months. Yeah.
Okay. Well, again, thanks for this report, Clint. I look forward to the fruit that's going to come from this. And again, look forward to being able to say loudly that Waco is the best city to build and develop in. And I think that we are, we hear, we, believe it or not, we hear that often. I think the Amazon group came in and said, like, this is the best city we've ever built and developed in. I know that other people don't only share that as their experience or sentiment, but think that after this, we'll be able to resource your department appropriately to ensure that that's the case. So look forward to moving forward.
All right. Thanks, Clint. Our next work session council is work session 261. Invite Nick Sarpey, our Director of Finance, to the table. He'll be discussing FY 2324, operating and CIP budget development. Nick?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This might be brief. So as we've mentioned, we're going to have an agenda item for you each council meeting through budget adoption to talk about the 2324 budget and its development. So really, all I have for you is the budget calendar. And so as we talked about last Tuesday, we've started our department presentations to City Manager's Office by each of the departments. We'll present to you at the next budget audit. We'll be here next council meeting and all future council meetings. At the May 9th, we hope to talk about the CIP, even though that's not on there. But after discussions yesterday, that's our intent. We'll go over the policies by the end of May, and then hopefully have a budget for you in good shape by the end of June, with our plan filing and presentation at a special council meeting by the City Manager of the proposed budget. The tax rates are all due at the end of July, and our budget is actually not due until August 1st. And then on this page is, highlighted in bold are the dates that are, where you would take action, or you'll receive presentations as well, that are required by state law in certain cases. So we'll have a resolution setting the public, the date for public hearing on the budget on August 1st. We'll talk about the fee schedule at the beginning of August, if not sooner. And we'll have, well, actually moving up the ordinance for setting departments. My hope is to have that to you in June, as well as a couple of other ordinances to be in that process ahead of schedule. Final adoption of the budget is scheduled for the 29th of August, which would be another special meeting, just like we've done in the past. And then we do the tax rate on September 5th. Any questions?
Alice?
I, I have a, I have a, just a, I don't know if it's a question. It's just a reminder of my inclusive park over at Floyd Casey Stadium. I want to make sure that, because it's been on hold now for, what, five years, four years? I know we have the land, and I just want to, if we need to put in a little bit every year, every budget year, to make sure that we have a beautiful inclusive park for our, our parents and citizens and children to go to. I just want to make sure that we don't forget that and put it in there somewhere. Even if it's just a little bit for the budget for the park, at least we know that we haven't forgotten about it.
Yeah, we, we definitely haven't. And Nick, clean this up for me if I, if I need it, okay? Because we just talked about this this week, Councilmember. We had a couple million dollars in the prior year allocated to design for Floyd Casey Park. In the current year, we have, is it 10 or 12 million?
I believe it's 10.
10 million in the current year. And then we'll have a follow-up request next year. I know the park staff has started working towards selecting an architect. I'm seeing some nodding from Tom and Jonathan. So we are, we are advancing forward there. And of course, the Floyd Casey Park will be kind of a, a regional amenity. So they'll have a lot of different elements to it, including a playground that's accessible for all abilities. And looking for, yeah, sorry, it may not be called Floyd Casey Park. Jennifer keeps reminding me of this. We're going to, we have an opportunity to rename that park as well at some point.
Oh, great.
So get that, you know, think, start thinking about that, but...
Got it, got it, got it.
Jonathan, when would the council next see an update on Floyd Casey Park?
Probably going to be, I would think, in June.
In June.
When the June council day will have something come to that.
And that would be the, probably the selection of your architecture firm?
Correct.
In June. So that'd be the next update you'll have. But from a budget standpoint, we are continuing to build, as you put it, year by year, towards what I think will be an expenditure in the 20 to $24 million range for that park.
Wow. Thank you for that, Bradley. Thank you for that, Jonathan. And thank you, Nick. I know you're the one that moves the money around. So thank you for that. I just didn't want us to forget our, our park that's been a need for Waco for quite a while.
Yep.
I think this is going to be awesome.
Yep.
Been a great advocate for that, Councilmember.
Thank you.
John, Nick, sorry. Thank you for this. And I just want to give a quick note. Thank you for the work that you and the rest of staff, really nearly, I think, everybody in City Hall put into our budget retreat that was held almost two weeks ago. And for any of the public that didn't get a chance to see that agenda, there's a lot of great reports included in that agenda packet that would be worthwhile for anyone who has questions about a lot of things going on in the city to check out. But that was a really great budget retreat that I think kicked us off and hopefully provided some helpful information to you and your team, but also definitely great information posted in that agenda.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
All right. Counselor, next update will be work session 262. LaShonda Mallory-Horn will come up. Greetings, LaShonda. For a discussion of our Waco-McClennan County Public Health District Cooperative Agreement between 2024 and 2028. LaShonda's slide deck is, is very informative, and she's going to take you through history of the public health as well as give you a look into what it takes to run the public health team. And as I looked through it, there's some interesting facts and stats. It's a big group, and they've got a big job. So LaShonda, thanks for your time today, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, City Manager, for, good afternoon, Mayor Meek and Councilmembers. Thank you, as always, for an opportunity to be here with you and to share the changes that we're proposing for the Waco-McClennan County Public Health District Cooperative Agreement for fiscal years 2024 through 2028. So here's our list of things we'll go over, and I'll just jump right into it. In 1950, the health, the city and the county began jointly funding the indigent health hospital and health unit. This was also the year that the polio vaccine became available, so it's a really important year in public health. And over the next 30 years, public health work continued. And around 1984, the local public health reorganization act led to the cooperative agreement. This is also during the time that the AIDS epidemic became an issue in the, in the U.S. So public health departments became a vital service for tracking and detecting the spread of HIV, which is the virus that causes AIDS, across communities of all sizes in the U.S., including McLennan County. An amendment to the agreement was made in 1988 to add the member cities, but at that time, the district was still funded solely by the City of Waco. And in 1996, the McLennan County began funding the Onsite Sewerage Facilities program. This picture on the end is relevant to public health, because this is the photo of a la, excuse me, this is a photo of the last child diagnosed with polio in the U.S. By distributing vaccines to children, the U.S. was able to eradicate polio in just under 50 years. This is a huge win, and is the guiding principles of what we now know as the Vaccine for Children and Adult Safety Net Program. Under the direction of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, in 1998, the Texas Department of State Health Services selected the health district as a pilot site for the population health approach to local public health. This is when the 10 Essential Public Health Services was introduced. The role of local public health was, has shifted over time and varies from community to community. In 2000, the health district shifted all primary care services, including prenatal care and well-child care, to Waco Family Medicine, a federally qualified healthcare center. This shift allowed for local public health to focus on providing the services listed in the Texas Health and Safety Code, and happened in local public health districts across health departments throughout the country and state. And in 2007, the dental clinic closed, and the services were relocated to Waco Family Medicine. And here we are today, as the health district, as you all know it. Currently, our health district focuses on providing the 10 essential functions, excuse me, the 10 essential public health services and meeting the legislative requirements of the Texas Health and Safety Code. These two documents complement one another and have a focus on promoting and protecting public health while preventing, preventing communicable and infectious diseases. After reorganization in fiscal year 2022, the Waco-McClennan County Public Health District is comprised of six divisions staffed by public health professionals from within our community that are dedicated to impacting the health outcomes of our family, friends, and neighbors that live and play here in the county alongside of us. The organizational chart here just shows a representation of what happens at the health district. And over the course of a person's lifespan, they will receive public health services either directly or indirectly. This graphic created by public health education specialist Vanessa Hernandez shows you how one person or even a family can benefit from health district services at different points in their life. Even prior to becoming pregnant, a woman can benefit from health district services, such as receiving testing for sexually transmitted infections, education on pregnancy prevention, and STI prevention, and regular vaccines. After becoming pregnant, parents and children benefit from both parents receiving recommended adult vaccines prior to delivery, and the mother being enrolled in the Women Infant Children Nutrition Program. At every phase of life, community members, young and old, benefit from the services of the health district. Preschool children reap the benefits of our environmental health services due to our inspectors and registered sanitarians working alongside childcare licensing agents to provide annual inspections for childcare, childcare centers. At some point, most residents will request either a birth or, or birth or death certificate from the health district, from our vital statistics office. And the work done by, by the health district is always data-driven, focused on prevention and health promotion, and excellence and efficiency. The health district has a staff capacity, capacity of 104 full and part-time employees. Of those, 38 are funded by annual budget contributions, and the remaining 66 are funded by grants. At this time, we have 93 staff employed with the goal to fill the remaining 11 positions over the next few months by working closely with human resources and professional organizations to recruit quality public health staff to Waco. Recruiting trained and qualified public health professionals is a top priority for myself and the health district management team. Equally as, is, as important is ensuring that any training and professional development provided builds capacity and allows for extended growth of the staff and expanded services to our community. During the advisory board meeting held February 2nd, 2022, a subcommittee was established to review the cooperative agreement and bring recommended changes to the board. Board members participating in the subcommittee included Heather Travers, the Director of McLennan County Indigent Care Services, Kevin Evans, McGregor City Manager, Monica Hindrich, City Secretary for Lorena, who represents some of the small cities in the health district, myself, and Deputy City Manager Deidre Emerson. The following changes and recommendations were presented during the January 18th board meeting and later presented to the McLennan County Commissioners' Court and Robinson City Council. The City of Bruceville-Eddie has also agreed to accept the proposed funding changes and, funding and language changes. The proposed changes to the funding structure for the cooperative agreement are based on an increased cost associated with delivering public health services. Over the last three years, we have seen a steady increase in the cost of supplies and an increase in the cost to recruit and retain quality public health professionals. It is proposed that the increase will be 35 cents per resident per year for funded cities, ending in year five of a contribution of $4.75 per person. And for McLennan County, the increase will be 30 cents per resident per year, ending in year five with a contribution of $3.75 per person. This spreadsheet estimates the contributions that will be made by each funded jurisdiction to the health district based on the 2020 U.S. census. The highlighted cities have historically been unfunded cities, but each year they are invited to contribute and join the interlocal agreement, but have consistently declined. The City of Waco provides 56% of the operating budget for the health district. Based on feedback from health district leadership, division managers, and supervisors, it is estimated that 90% of the services provided by the health district are consumed by the City of Waco residents. There were seven recommended changes brought to the board by the subcommittee. These changes included both clarifying language and changes that would satisfy alignment with the Texas Health and Safety Code and City of Waco policies and procedures. The role of the advisory board was clarified to reflect the definition in the Texas Health and Safety Code. Board member terms are clarified, as well as increase in the number of government representatives from five to eight to establish a quorum. And a recommendation was made to allow for special meetings to only be called by myself as the director or, or the advisory board chairperson. According to the Texas Health and Safety Code, board members must be three-year residents of McLennan County before serving on the board, and the language was updated in the agreement to reflect this requirement. And the last of the two recommendations were based on purchasing an accounting policy at the City of Waco. The director's spending authority increased from $25,000 to $50,000, and rather than mailing the audit report to board members, it will be made available to them electronically. Oh, I'm behind. During the January board meeting, board members were encouraged to review the agreement and share any recommendations they or the jurisdiction, or the jurisdiction they represent may have. Two recommendations were submitted by more board members, which were the first to omit the wording that dictated who the county would appoint, and retain the wording that special meetings may also be called by government representatives. Our next steps include, excuse me, for the cooperative agreement, cooperative agreement include a final discussion and approval by the health board tomorrow, April 19th, as well as final discussion and approval from the McLennan County Commissioners' Court and this body on May 2nd. Again, I would like to thank Mayor and City Council for your time this afternoon. I also would like to thank Deputy City Manager Deidre Emerson, City Attorney Jennifer Ritchie, and Assistant City Attorney Lauren Oliveras for their assistance during this process, as well as the health district administration team. I can answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions, comments?
Holmes here. Great report. Director Mallory-Horn, appreciate all the information. A couple of quick questions. I can, I can follow up with you on these outside of this meeting. But on page, page 43, we have the $4.8 million total source of funding. Do we have a similar presentation for the uses, sources and uses is what my world is? I know we have $4.8 million. What are we using the $4.8 million for? The expenses of running the deal, I suppose?
I can make that available in our, from our budget information. Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you. And then so that, my only other observation is the approval from us on May 2nd is, we're, we're going to be approving the budget or the, the funding of this 56% of the $4.8 million?
The agreement, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Great report.
Thank you.
Great report. This is really meaningful work. Our community is definitely stronger and better because of it. So thank you for your dedication. I've said it before, but it's really great to be getting back to health district, regular work in putting COVID-19 in the mirror. So I'm glad to continue to see us move forward into a bright future with the good work that you're doing.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you so much, mayor.
All right, mayor and council, our next work session is gonna be about Chief Summers? There he is, where's chief? Discussion of Waco Fire Station Updates. Chief Summers was due to present to our retreat a week or two ago, and unfortunately, we ran out of time. So we've got him rescheduled here. He's gonna give you a history of fire station additions, talk to you a little about NFPA and our standards that we have, as well as at the end of the presentation, ask you for some feedback about architectural styles for the new fire station on La Salle. So there'll be some imagery towards the end that chief's looking for some guidance. Chief?
Thank you, Bradley, mayor and council. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the fire stations in the city of Waco. As you can see, terminating the adequate fire station location begins with an evaluation of apparatus and personnel deployment throughout the department service area and the ability to meet the response criteria as recommended by NFPA seventeen-ten, which is the standard for the organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations to the public by career fire departments. So as Bradley talked about, we're gonna talk about coverage as it relates to the standards, NFPA seventeen-ten, ISO, and how that ties into accreditation, as well as the future fire station timelines, and then again, the council input on station four relocation. Fire station coverage, if you look at the red, that is fire station number eleven, and the blue is the proposed fire station number fifteen, and that's a four-minute response time in the area. And as you can see, that four-minute response time in the proposed area is currently not covered. So that's why we're really excited about putting that fire station in that area, so it's gonna increase our response times in that area. So NFPA twelve-twenty-one and seventeen-ten standards. NFPA twelve-twenty-one is a standard for the installation of maintenance and use of emergency services communication systems. So the alarm answering time is the time that the call comes in in nine-one-one, and we need our operators answering those calls within fifteen seconds, ninety-five percent of the time, and within forty seconds, ninety-nine percent of the time. The alarm processing time is the time that they get the call and start sending it out to the fire station, and they need to do that within sixty-four seconds, ninety percent of the time, and within a hundred and six seconds, ninety-five percent of the time. Then you look at our turnout times, that's the time it takes for us to get the call from the alarm center and get out of the fire station. If it's an EMS call, emergency medical services call, we want to get out within sixty seconds, eighty seconds for fire calls. We want to make sure that our fire engines arrive on the scene two-hundred-and-forty seconds, within four minutes. Then the initial full alarm, which is a low or medium hazard time, we want our fire trucks to get there with full complement of personnel, seventeen people or more within eight minutes, four-hundred-and-eighty seconds. And for high hazard, high rise, within six-hundred-and-ten seconds, ten minutes and ten seconds, ninety percent of the time. I can tell you that we meet that standard ninety percent of the time, all of the time. And I want to give you an example of what it looks like and what it sounds like in processing a alarm. Let's see if I click on this, nope.
Did you click on that video?
Hey, chief, before we show that, I think it might be a good time for a break. We're having some sound issues.
Okay.
And online, with our online production. So let's take about a ten-minute break.
We will call this meeting back to order.
PM, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So again, that video would have really demonstrated.
Paid it, chief, I'll be the siren.
I've already narrated, you know.
I'll be the siren.
The call comes in, they answer within fifteen seconds or forty seconds. Then they process the alarm, then our turnout time. And at the end of the video, you'll see that the fire department arrives within four minutes. The first engine arrives within four minutes on the scene. And that's our goal, to get that first unit there within four minutes. It's critically important that we do that, especially for EMS calls, and more importantly, for fires. So the ISO, which you, you know, we're proud to have an ISO Class One. Not every department within the country has that distinction. But that is graded on the emergency communications. Our dispatch center gets ten points. And that's basically how many dispatches we have, how many consoles we have. Do we have audible and visual notification within the center? In the event that we had a generator go down at one of our towers, it would notify us, and we've got that. And then the fire department is graded at fifty points. And that's talking about personnel, fire equipment, the type of equipment, the amount of training that we get. And then the water supply is graded at forty points. And we've got a great system where we scored a little less than ninety-seven points for a Class One. And we're also preparing to become an applicant agency with the Centers for Public Safety of Excellence Commission on Fire Accreditation International. So this is our history. Fire Station Eight was built in fifty-eight. Fire Station Number Nine was built in nineteen-seventy-four. Fire Station Number Four was built in nineteen-sixty. And you can see the ages on it, I won't go through all of them. But the issue that we're having, and we're addressing those issues, is gender equity within our fire station. We want to make sure that we provide gender equity within our fire stations. And there's some more history on Fire Station Twelve, Six, Fire Station Seven, and our airport Fire Station Number Ten. And our newest Fire Station Number Six was in twenty-two, and Fire Station Number Five was in twenty-nineteen. So our future stations, Fire Station Fifteen, this is what that station would look like when it's completed. I could tell you the timelines on that. The fire station design will be finalized in May of twenty-three. Request for proposal, June of twenty-three. Expected substantial completion in quarter one of twenty-five. The project budget was five-point-four million dollars. Operating budget is three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. And there's a ten percent contingency, four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars for an eighty-one hundred-square-foot structure that would have jack-and-gear bathrooms for male and female. Station Four, located on La Salle between Eighth and Ninth Street, the fire station design request council approved for design RFP in December of this year. Selection of design firm between April and May of twenty-four. Fire station design finalized September to October of twenty-four. The fire station construction RFP, October to November of twenty-four. Fire station construction, April to May of twenty-five. Expected substantial completion in quarter one of twenty-seven, and the grand total project budget is seven million dollars. Now, these dates can change depending on where we are in the process. So this is where I need your input. What should the new Fire Station Four look like? Should it be a traditional neighborhood design, potential design unique to the neighborhood? As you can see, this is Fire Station Number Four. We're relocating it from its location to the La Salle location. And in twenty-sixteen, there was a study done on the La Salle Avenue corridor for considerations. And that Mercado look, do we want something like that? Or do we want emission-style fire station examples? And this is where I want council input as to what you would like. And I know there's been some changes on La Salle Avenue. I think the initial consideration was based on the chamber being located there, and I think they're looking at a different location. So if that's the design you still want to go with, that's fine. But I want to have the input from you guys as to what you want that fire station to look like.
A correction, chief. That chamber building is occupied by the owner, which is Community Projects Inc. They're still there, they're gonna be there, so the design of the building is gonna stay there.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah. The chamber, Hispanic Chamber, has moved downtown. But the owners of the building, which is Centex Community Projects, Inc., is still there at the building, and it's occupied.
Okay.
Just for clarification to everyone.
Well, Alice, I mean, is this, this is district two, right?
Yes.
What do you think of those designs? What do you think?
You recommend those designs?
Councilmember?
The designs are nice, but.
The mission design, do you like that, or do you kind of like them?
Yeah, I kind of like, don't everybody please panic? I like, I like the mission thing, but if we could coordinate it with the Community Projects, Inc. building, which is gonna be right next door to it, if we could somehow make them look alike because some kind of a way.
Like consist, kind of consistency?
Yeah, the consistency between Eighth and all the way up to Tenth Street. Because there's a church on Tenth Street that is kind of gonna go the way that we're looking as well. So if we could just keep that consistency, chief, that's why I said don't panic. But of all of these, I think I like the first one. The first picture here, I like that look. I don't, you know, but again, if you could kind of make the, that, what do you call that thing? Yeah, the tower, there you go, thank you. To look and resemble sort of the front of the Centex Community Projects, Inc. building that's there. I don't, it's not too totally different from what is there now, from this first picture.
Now, there will be, the cost is gonna be different than a traditional-style fire station.
About this tower here, I'm not talking about anything else in that building. Just so that that tower will resemble the front part of the Community Projects, Inc. building. That's why I said don't panic. You know, I don't, you know, maybe you can, Stafford, somebody can come up with what I'm feeling.
What I think what you're saying is of all the pictures that are here, these are, again, just examples.
Yeah.
The first one is more stylized, like the shape and angles of the building that is Community Projects, Inc.
Yeah. Which is on Ninth and La Salle, they would be your neighbors.
I like the idea, I mean, La Salle is one of our prominent boulevards. It is not. It has a culture and also has a lot of bright opportunity for the future and is already such a distinct and interesting part of our community that I think that having an interesting architectural fire station is something that I'm really interested in seeing.
Just so it doesn't look so out of place.
I know when we did Twenty-Fifth Street, didn't we engage the Neighborhood Association there?
No.
You did.
Some pretty useful feedback.
Yeah.
It seems like we could do the same thing on the La Salle one.
Absolutely.
But to answer your question, what is the new, if you want my feedback, whatever Alice wants it to look like, is my answer. I had a great report, chief. And I commend you on your leadership of the fire department. We commit to deliver best-in-class services, and you do that every day with your team. Congratulations again on the hundred-and-fifty-year celebration. You led a fun night, it was a beautiful evening with a lot of fun kids running around. It was very fun to celebrate a hundred-and-fifty years of the Waco Fire Department. I had just a quick question back on the NFPA. I know we're not getting into this, and I don't need an answer today, but just maybe some metrics around. The page back there, we're talking about NFPA twelve-twenty-one and seventeen-ten standards. Are there different standards from city to city on when EMS answers a call and when both EMS and the fire department answer a call? And is there any efficiency we can gain from a city perspective of having the fire department answer different kinds of, different kinds, or re-filtering when the fire department has to come out? So I know there's been a couple of times, what I'm personally involved in, where we definitely need the EMS. We really didn't need the fire department there. And they both showed up, again, and this timing was fantastic, it was as you lay out. But is there, is there a way to rethink when the fire department has to answer every call or not? And I would just be curious to get some data around. What is the filter on when does EMS call? And does EMS and fire department both have to respond?
Well, given that we are a basic life support agency and our response times are centered around that four-point, I mean, that four-minute response time, and that we're strategically located throughout the community, it's more beneficial for us to respond on those basic life support calls until the advanced life support unit gets there. And when they get there, we can go back in service. But to not respond or to rely on the advanced life support only would be a disservice to our community that we serve. So when you look at standards of cover from different departments around the country, their standards of cover based on the accreditation model is based on what do they see, what their response times may be. And they could be anywhere from five to eight minutes to get everybody there, or five to eight minutes to get the first unit there, based on how they're spaced out. But the national standard is four minutes and eight minutes. So that doesn't change. If you want to work toward that standard, that municipality has the capacity to do that. And that's what we've chosen here in Waco, to work toward that four-minute and eight-minute standards. So when accreditation people come in to review our organization, our standards of cover will reflect that we want our response times to be within that six-minute window. That's what our goal is, to get there within six minutes. And we meet that goal every month.
Chief, one thing that might be helpful for the council, the last time I, it's been a while, the last time I looked at AMR's response time on priority ones, it was close to eight minutes. And, you know, when you're waiting on a BLS service, y'all are getting there in four to four and a half. If we weren't there for those two minutes, three minutes, that seems like an eternity. So it might be helpful to dust off the AMR response times so that council member's question can have some more background to it.
But AMR's not positioned like, or their actual physical locations are, because they're not at each fire station also, right? So, I mean, there's no way that, I mean, because what you said is true, and yeah, we probably should see those numbers, but I mean, just because of the positioning and locations of the various fire stations, proximity, you could probably get there first to at least administer some form of aid till when, where AMR is coming from, they can get to.
And then the other piece of that, too, is although we are basic life support, we do have members within our organization that are paramedics.
Yes.
So that they can start providing a service that until AMR gets there, they know what they're looking at. So, but I can get those numbers for you, absolutely.
Thanks, Brett. Any other questions?
Other questions, comments? Chief, thank you so much, and thank you to the firefighters in our community. As we said at the centennial the other night, we're so proud of you, our ISO-one rating, and how every day our firefighters put their lives on the line to keep our city safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
All right, one more. And it's everyone's favorite. Director Development Services, Clint Peters, with.
Why would he say that? I just heard the music tonight, so it'll work.
He'll be providing update of the public hearings tonight. And Clint, I think you've got enough time to go through them all, but we're gonna see how it goes.
Okay.
Twelve, the first one, subdivision plats. We do have the final plat of the Lake Waco Brazos Business Park Phase One. This is a commercial development out in the ETJ across the lake. First phase covers eight lots. These are all two-acre-plus size, and you can see where they're constructing the road there. And then our other plat is the final plat of the Cameron Park Neighborhood, Pocket Neighborhood. This is a hundred-and-fifty-one lots, and this is the preliminary. Uh, this is a hundred and fifty-one lots. Uh, this is the preliminary plat, uh, that's coming in. Here's the layout. Um, Plan Commission, uh, has approved this one, recommended approval this one. Uh, there was a couple of items I wanted to point out on this one. They, uh, we did, uh, have a traffic impact study submitted with that. Uh, it did come back and, uh, recommended improvements to Park Lake. Uh, right now, Park Lake, uh, is curved right there as you head into the park. And this is recommending a T-intersection there, uh, to accommodate traffic both from the park, Nineteenth Street, and then the new, new development. Uh, there's also some, uh, improvements that need to occur to Adeline, Holiday, and Greenwood as those new street connections are there. And then, uh, some potential off-site sewer upgrades, uh, or potential, uh, lift station upgrades. Uh, and those will all be, uh, covered, uh, when the final plat and construction plans are submitted. Uh, but this does come to you, uh, with a recommendation of approval.
Um, a, a, just a couple of quick, I normally don't comment on plating, but these are both in, kind of interesting and unique. The first one, the location is interesting because that's back in that Spiegelville area, and I think that's a, that's an area of future growth for, for the county and the city and the ETJ. And as we think about, uh, long-term planning, how that, uh, how that area starts kind of filling in between our China Spring neighborhoods and our West Highway eighty-four neighborhoods. The, the second one, a- again, this came to us in a form of a PUD several months ago. And we, I think we kind of hammered through all the issues on this one, but, uh, I, I get an elegant solution to the builders just using the, not using the PUD process, but just using the resi, the rights that he can do, uh, in, in that single-family zoned area, right?
That, that's correct. So all the, all the lots, uh, meet the minimum size and area requirements for R-one-B zoning, which is, uh, the current zoning on the property, uh, and it does meet all the infrastructure requirements as well.
Yeah, and a hundred and fifty-one lots infill. I mean, that's amazing. That's a lot of, uh...
And, and they are, they are going to have a lot of the same elements as the PUD. All the, uh, streets will have sidewalks on it. Uh, they're looking at doing, uh, rear load or side load, residential, street trees. Uh, a lot of those urban elements that were a part of the PUD is just, uh, conforming to the existing zoning.
Got it. Thanks.
Uh, we have several special permits. The first is for, uh, an expansion of Polyclass, uh, which is industrial, uh, use out in our industrial district. Uh, they make, uh, a roofing product and, uh, looking at a, about a hundred thousand square foot, uh, expansion, uh, which requires them to amend their special permit. Uh, um, you can see this is what was approved and then what they're adding on. And, uh, Plan Commission recommended approval of, of this one. Uh, the next one is for a new, uh, daycare, uh, facility out in China Spring on Parker Springs Drive. Uh, this is a, a daycare called Kids Are Kids. Uh, planned for about two hundred and fifty-seven kids from six months, that's twelve years old. Uh, they currently have a roadway lo- location, so this would be their second location in the area. Uh, and it's on Parker, Parker Springs Drive there near China Spring.
Clint, when they have that many kids, do they, do they have to have so many, uh, people working with the kids, uh, according to, like you said, two hundred and fifty-seven kids? How many employees would they have to have to meet some kind of requirement?
Sure, that, that's regulated by the state. They are, uh, proposing to have forty teachers for that. Yep.
The, the, just to comment on, follow Alicia's comment, the, I'm, I'm supportive of this one because i- as we see, uh, workforce issues and, and jobs and, uh, job training, childcare and transportation are going to be two things we really need to be filling in, in the city. And this looks like a, a big facility, forty. I didn't realize it was going to be that many, uh, instructors there too. So I know that area needs, uh, a major childcare center, so th- this is filling a need.
Yeah, we, there are two, um, conditions, uh, to the special permit, uh, and this is standard for most of our childcare facilities. We do have a time limit. Uh, just so we can, uh, check in on those and make sure they're operating correctly. Uh, so we are recommending a three-year time limit on this one. Uh, and then, um, just the circulation, make sure all the drop-off is on, on-site and not on the street. Uh, the next special permit is a, uh, for self-storage warehouse in C-two. This is a property off of, uh, Steinbeck Bend, near there in the section of China Spring Road. Uh, this is for, uh, larger, uh, storage for your boats and RVs, uh, right behind the filling station there at the corner. Uh, it is C-two zoning. Um, this is their site plan. There are some requirements, uh, for landscaping, um, architectural style elevations on the front of the, uh, building facing Steinbeck Bend. Uh, and some lighting and screening requirements from the residential properties to the rear. Uh, the next one is a, a special permit for short-term rental type one. Uh, this is off Old Steinbeck Bend Road. Uh, this is actually a, a, over a hundred acre, uh, property, um, that goes all the way down to Brazos River. Uh, there's two houses on the property, one where the owner lives and they're wanting to rent out, uh, the other house. It does, uh, qualify as STR-one uh, because the owner, uh, will be on, on-site, uh, during rentals. Uh, this, this is looking from the road and you can not see the house. It's way down there. Yeah, it's, so it's pretty isolated. Um, and no comments on here. And then this is the house, uh, down by the river that they're renting out. Uh, the, the next...
On that one, is that, is that zoned R-one-B?
It's, it's R-one, it's single-family zoning.
So they would be on-site and renting it out?
So, yes, our ordinance allows STR-one in R-one-B, uh, which either requires the owner to be present or an operator to be present. In this case, it would be the owner.
The owner. Okay, thanks, Clint.
Uh, the next public hearing, two seventy-six, is a abandonment request. This is for a portion of a, uh, unbuilt alley, uh, between Austin Avenue and Chateau. Uh, the applicant is, uh, Dane Shelton, uh, who owns, uh, the home on Chateau that's, uh, looking to incorporate some of that, uh, abandoned alley into the, the backyard of his house. Um, this one's got a, a little bit of evolution to it, so I'll kind of go through this step by step. So the, uh, original application, uh, for the alley abandonment is for this gray area, uh, here that, that goes all the way behind the Shelton property, which is about two hundred and twenty-one feet. There's a, two, uh, owners on the other side of the alley from Shelton. One is Mr. Odom. Uh, and then, uh, one is Mrs. McReynolds. Uh, the Odom property has about a hundred and seventy-one feet of frontage on that alley. And then the McReynolds property is about fifty feet. Um, the, the McReynolds, um, voiced their opposition to the alley abandonment, uh, uh, of any of the alley abandoned. They wanted to, to leave it the way it is, uh, for the portion that's behind their property. And so the original staff recommendation was for the area in yellow. Um, and, which would be, uh, both sides of the alley right away, uh, on both sides from, uh, Odom and Shelton. Um, this was over, uh, two Plan Commission meetings. The Plan Commission did continue at once. Um, let us work on it, and then it came back to the Plan Commission. Uh, Mr. Shel- Shelton, uh, really wanted, um, kind of the most important part of the alley abandonment to help his plans was the portion of, the ten-foot portion of the alley closest to his property, uh, across from McReynolds' um, property. So this is what the Plan Commission ended up recommending. And so for the, the full length behind the Shelton property, which is ten feet, and then, uh, ten feet adjacent to the Odom property, but leaving the ten-foot of the alley adjacent to the, uh, McReynolds property intact. And so this was the Plan Commission recommendation to try to, um, you know, meet, meet all the needs of all the three parties involved. Between, um, the Plan Commission meeting and this City Council, uh, Mr. Odom contacted us and he, he decided that he would like to just keep the alley, the ten-foot alley adjacent to his property as alleyway. And so, um, uh, Mr. Shelton revised his, uh, application to just include the ten-foot of the alleyway adjacent to his property, uh, in the request. And then the ten-foot behind Odom and McReynolds' property would stay alley right away.
Okay, uh, just, Clint, if I could just ask some questions here. So the current application, where we are right now after two Plan Commission's hearings, two Plan Commission hearings and, and some rev- there was a revised application since then, is essentially for the length of Mr. Shelton's property, he is asking that half of the alley, split down the middle, be abandoned, his side to him. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that, so Mr. Odom is good with that as to his property.
That's correct.
But Mrs. McReynolds, who once served on this council, is my understanding, her, and her son speaks for her in this matter. Uh, they do not want the portion that's adjacent to their property abandoned. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that sliver of property of the alley of the Shelton side of the, i- is what's at issue essentially?
That's correct. Yeah, so the, the options for council tonight would be to approve it, uh, you know, as shown on this map, which would be the ten-foot, uh, adjacent to Shelton's, to, to deny it, just to leave it like it is. Uh, you know, or you could request staff to go back and look at other options, um, you know, for, for that. But, uh, this is, this is what's being, uh, requested and on, uh, your agenda tonight is that ten-foot behind Shelton's property.
Clint, um, are, I don't know if you're familiar with this property, but I'm looking on the, um, Google Street view of this.
Yeah.
There we go.
There we go.
And so if you back up a little bit, I don't, do you have any backed up? Okay. So is this where it start after the concrete?
Oh, there, there's actually, uh, i- if you go back to this, so...
I'm trying to see where...
So here's where the, there's where the concrete stops, right there. And so there's, um, space between the concrete and where...
It's just open green space. That's all it is.
Green space, yep. So, but you can kind of see where that orange fence is right there. That's where the abandonment would start.
And why does, what is Mr. McReynolds' reasons for wanting to, uh, maintain that as alley space?
I, I think, um, the main reason is easiest, there are, there are utilities in this. Uh, right away is just easy access to those. We are, uh, part of our recommendation is that, uh, we would retain easements for those. Uh, we did get feedback from, uh, utility departments and, uh, uh, Encore, and, uh, I think there's some cable in there as well. And they, they're okay with abandoning the right of way and keeping the easements, but I, I think it was just the ease of access, uh, just having the open alley to those utilities for maintenance.
It, are the, uh, I'm forgetting the family's name now. The ones wanting the abandonment, are they okay with the easement utility?
Yes.
The utility easement?
Yes.
And we'll be able to access those utilities, um, with that? Is that right?
And I think that those, uh, may or not to interrupt your questioning, but I do think that, that the utilities also are on kind of the Odom side of the alley. Is that fair to say?
You can see where the, the power pole goes. It's, it will be on the, the ten-foot that will remain alley right away.
Um, I know that, um, um, Mr. McReynolds emailed us and had some concerns over the abandonment process, but were all protocols followed as far as you know?
Y- y- yeah, so we, um, that, we don't have an abandonment ordinance, you know, it, we do, um, you know, there's not a protocol for how we abandon it, you know. Our general practice is, you know, if we're not using, um, alleys, uh, you know, for alleys and they're just being used for utility access, we've, we've recommended uh, those to be converted over to easements. Um, I mean, typically, we'd like for the whole alley, alley to be abandoned. And, you know, best practice is to have it all abandoned, um, and convert it to easement. But in this case, where you have property owner that's not wanting it to be abandoned, uh, this is a solution. But yes, we did follow all, uh, you know, protocols and procedures for that.
And that, that alley dead ends, is that right?
Yeah, it's, it, it didn't, it, it stops at the end of...
Not like a thruway?
Yeah, it stops at the end of Shelton's property and Odom's property.
Okay. So it's like just wasted dead grass space in that yellow sliver?
Yes.
Basically. Okay.
Could you go back to that picture? And I know this alley is not being used for anything, but my question in looking at this, in case the need arose, for that orange fence to the pole, is that wide enough for an automobile or a track to go, a truck to go through?
Um, it would be really tight, but it, it would provide access. You know, a lot of, lot of, uh, mo- a lot of the city has, uh, especially their power in the back of the properties and there's no alleys. They're just easements, so they're, they're accessing it, um, they're, very rarely are they accessing it by vehicle. They're, you know, they're getting out of their trucks and going down to those. So it, it would allow, um, access to get to those to maintain them.
Okay.
Is one, can you flip back two slides, one more slide? It's one of, could, is one of the solutions, maybe take this one and cut that yellow in half, north and south and let Shelton have his ten-foot without imp- impinging on the McReynolds track? I mean...
Yes, that is a solution.
What was that? Councilmember Holmes, can you say that again? I apologize.
Taking that, that one right there and just cutting the, down the middle, north and south and saying, "Shelton, keep that." It doesn't impinge on McReynolds. Odom seems to be okay with that. I'm not su-
But that's the half alley solution, right? For the length of the Odom property? Is that what you're proposing?
I'm not proposing.
I mean, that, that's, I mean, not proposing, but...
Possibly. Is that a possible solution?
Yeah.
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 Exploring.
I mean, I would encourage councilmembers who have access to the, uh, street view to look at this. I mean, it, it is a just a patch of grass that, that just dead ends. And as long as there's a utility easement, I mean, i- and his driveway will be preserved. It, I, I would be personally frustrated as a neighbor, and I know we can deliberate this when, and, and I look forward to hearing from Mr. Reynolds and, and certainly respect him and, and look forward to hearing from him, but I would, it would be hard for me to know that there's just this patch of totally unused grass right behind my house that dead ends into nothing. And there's utility easement still maintained, so for all intents and purposes, those can always be accessed. But I can't have access to it and it just like lingers out there in perpetuity for a purpose that will not exist. But again, um, look forward to hearing from the parties tonight and making a decision then.
Clint, who's, who, that cement thing there, who does that belong to? Which, which your neighbor?
It's actually in the, the alley right of way, so it's a shared, um, access point to, uh, Mrs. McReynolds' property.
The concrete part?
Yeah.
But I was wondering myself, who does that belong to?
It's city, it's in the, technically, it's, it's city alleyway.
Okay.
That provides access to both of these properties right here.
Okay. That still loses in a dilemma.
One other thing that I think needs to be recognized is it's been like this for seventy-odd years.
Yep.
And those people have, have, uh, been comfortable with the arrangement up to this point in time and that, I think that should be taken into consideration.
Certainly.
And, uh, this might be an off-the-wall question, but is there any reason Mr. Shelton is wanting to do with the, with that added piece of property to his home? Is there anything in, in particular that he wants to do in that area?
My, my understanding, uh, they're wanting to incorporate it into their backyard. They're, they're looking at building the new, uh, either carport or garage back here. That, it wouldn't, that would not extend into the, the extra ten feet, but it's, uh, would provide, um, area for his required setback and more space for the backyard.
I know we'll talk about this more tonight, or in about an hour, I guess. But I know it's one of the initiatives of the city to, at least me, I'm, we need to, right now, we're responsible for taking care of all these alleys. We're trying to get that out of our maintenance budget and let, and give these alleys back to the people and let them have that extra land. So this to me is a, an example of, somebody's trying to help us out here. Uh, and there's, it seems to me there's a solution in here somewhere. I, I'm just not sure.
Because one, one, one property owner doesn't want it. I mean, doesn't want that changed, doesn't want this changed.
Yeah, and it seems like we're saying, "Okay, you don't have to take it."
Take that in consideration as well.
Yeah.
I mean... I mean, what do we do? Staff, come up with a good-
Well, I mean, if the, the pattern had been to get alleys out, out of our purview, then that's what the pattern has been set. And I mean, as, as they come up, we just, isn't that, isn't that the direction that the city has been going?
That's correct.
Anyway, all right.
We're gonna, we're, we're gonna have a great discussion. And we'll get to here, we'll, we'll get some context, I think, from the property, uh, property owners that are, um, we'll be here too, so. All right.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one? All right, thanks Clint.
The next two abandaments are associated with the Cotton Palace Park renovations. And so, there, there's some old street rightaways that are actually right in the middle of the ballpark, that obviously, there's no streets there. So, we're cleaning that up. And then, there's also abandonment of a portion of clay that WISD would like, that separates the school and the parking lot. We do need to retain some easements there. But this would be abandoned as well.
What would be abandoned?
The, this section of clay between the school and their parking lot, that's, that's functioned, it basically functions as a-
It doesn't bother our park?
Yeah, this doesn't abandon, this doesn't bother our park at all.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is, comes to you from both the city and the school district. We have one other abandonment. This is for an easement. This is associated with that childcare facility. There's an easement that crosses that property, is not being used, that they want to abandon. And then, the two PUDs, the first one, 280, this is a PUD zone change to C3 and M2 to PUD. This is six acres near the intersection of MLK and I-35, you know, separated by the railroad track here, I-35, and then MLK. They are wanting to do a mixed-use PUD that has about 600,000 square feet of space, including mixed-use retail on the ground floor, and then multifamily high-rise with a 30-story, and then several six-story buildings. This is their site. They would have an entry off both I-35 and MLK into the site, heavily landscaped, and then pedestrian-friendly improvements. Here's the, the view of it looking from the corner of MLK and I-35, you see I-35 to the right, and then Tejas Logistics over here to the left. This is looking back towards the river. You can see McLean Stadium over here. This is, some of the inspiration of the design of the building was kind of the vertical elements of McLean. And then, some of the pedestrian facilities. This would be a new hike and bike trail adjacent to the railroad tracks. They did have two meetings with the Neighborhood Association, Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association, and then opened, an open house as well. And some of the major input from that was connecting this development, not only with the river, but to the neighborhood as well. They don't own the property to the north yet, but they do have a trail system that can be extended back over to Beach. And then, they've been talking with parks about this trail system connecting back under MLK and over to the river as well. The other, the other main themes from those discussions were potential for affordable housing. And so, we, we did, we worked with the developer, and we have a condition in there that 10%, of the units be a mix of affordable housing-
Minimum.
80% and 120% of AMI.
10%, minimum.
That's correct. Those details are still being worked out. This is the concept plan. And so, we'll be working with Galen and the housing team, as well as the developer, to get that more figured out. And then, when the final PUD plan comes forward, we'll have the details of that. But that's correct, that 10% would be the minimum for 80% and 120% of AMI. And then, the, the other major theme comment was the impact of traffic. And so, we are requiring a traffic impact analysis to see how this has impact, and what improvements are needed on the, the surrounding streets. This is a picture looking on the interior of the complex, again, showing that bottom-floor retail with the multi-story, multifamily. And then, some of the existing pictures, looking here. This is, it's vacant land, and then the OEO hotel would go away. And then, this is looking back towards McLean. So, Plan Commission did recommend approval by a vote eight to two. We do have several conditions. We talked about the TIA. There are some sewer and water studies that need to be conducted before the final PUD plans are met. A drainage study, about a, two-thirds of this property's in the floodplain. They've already started working on that with Public Works, and on a conditional floodplain development permit. Property needs to be platted. Talked about the minimum 40 units, the minimum of 10% affordable, based on the density, the bonus that they're getting with the PUD, and that the property will not be gated, they'll be open to the public.
Remind us the timeframe from general, if, should the proposed PUD be approved tonight to the final? Is there a-
So, so this would be the ordinance, so there'd be a second reading of this, and then, you know, when all the conditions have been worked through by the applicant, they could submit a, a final PUD application. And that goes back through the public hearing process with Plan Commission and City Council.
Kind of a related question, Clint. Holmes over here. Both on this PUD and the next one, the PUDs is kind of rezoning from the existing zoning to a PUD, but it kind of starts a process? It's not really, we're not approving the final plan?
Correct. Yeah, this is just the, the first step. Those entitlements that we talked about in the other presentation, this is that entitlement for land use, and some of the general conceptual elements of the project. The final PUD gets into construction details and all the nitty-gritty of the project. And then, we do anticipate there will be some sort of economic development ask on this, too, that will have to go through, you know, council approval as well.
Ask where the real discussion begins.
Yeah, exactly.
In the preliminary, like even the architectural renderings, this is just a first step. Those are subject to, all subject to change.
That's correct. And then, the other PUD in East Waco is down MLK at the corner of Herring and MLK. This is a 40-acre tract in Carver, vacant tract right now that, adjacent to the Hollywood addition. It's urban residential land use, and then it's a mix of R1B zoning, and there is some O2 zoning, which is a higher-density zoning along Dallas. The current zoning would yield about 10 units an acre, as developed under the existing zoning, and what they're proposing is about six units an acre. It is a, a mixed residential development. They'll have different housing concepts, from townhouses to smaller, single-family lots, rear-load to larger lots, as you get, move closer to the existing Hollywood neighborhood. And then, all, all the streets will have sidewalks, street trees, street lights, and then exterior pedestrian trail system, and then an interior amenity area that would be controlled by the HOA. And you can see the different connection points with green space throughout the development. And this project will be phased, and then two phases. Phase one would be the portion closest to MLK, and then phase two would be the portion closest to Dallas. They did engage with Carver Neighborhood Association for at least two meetings. I think they met with their leadership group a third time, and got input for, from them, and tried to incorporate some of those items as well. This is the different types of housing that you see. This is the same designer that did Floyd Casey, so if some of these concepts look familiar, that's, it is the same designer that's designed Floyd Casey redevelopment. So, you know, with the concept of having smaller lots and more open common space, this, this development has about, almost nine acres of that 40 acres is usable, open common space. Here's the site looking from Dallas and Herring. This is the property here, looking back down Herring towards MLK, and then looking from MLK here. This is where you have the Encore transmission line, so a lot of that green area and, and the trail system would be along here. Plan Commission did recommend approval by a vote of nine to one, again, with several conditions included. TIA, again, the TIA is going to meet all the final PUD development requirements. Most likely, there'll be a widening of a section of MLK to accommodate a right turn bay there. Drainage study must be submitted. And again, a, a minimum of 10% affordable housing, I, I think because of the, the bonuses that they're getting with lot size, and some of the variances for, for setbacks, that is appropriate to add that as a requirement for, for zoning. Again, with that same mix. And again, that would be a minimum. And that, that trail system along the exterior of the property would be open to the public. That would be a public accessible. These are all developer in agreement with all these, and are looking to work through these issues before they submit the, the final PUD, similar to the other one. We did not get any opposition to this one, or any public comment at the Plan Commission.
I don't remember if you mentioned, were there any for the other one?
There was, there was-
Was, I'm sorry, did-
Opposition for the, yes, there was a two, two no vote, but I meant-
Uh, Jeanette Bell spoke at, for the other one in opposition.
Clint, is there a timeline requirement for the phases?
There, there is some timings in here. The way that PUDs work, they put timelines in there. And if those, if the development hasn't developed along with those timelines, the, the city can come back in and request rezoning on the property.
Thanks.
Did it look like to you that the community centerpiece was in phase two?
Yes.
And I believe that is it.
You had one more, didn't you? 282.
Oh, yep, there's one more. I'm sorry. There's one more zone change. This is out on East Loop Drive, Loop 340, a rezoning from R1 to M2. This is a, a unique case. The property is actually split by our city limits. Half of it is developed outside the city for self-storage with no zoning. Now, they're wanting to develop the front part of it, which is inside the city and has zoning, but it's single-family zoning, and they need M2 zoning to be able to expand that use as a permitted use. And so, they're requesting the rezoning of this. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this. Staff had recommended disapproval, just because it wasn't in conformance with our, our land use plan, for a comprehensive plan, which calls for all that to be residential out in that area. But I think for the fact that the back half of the property is already developed industrially, and there wasn't any opposition, that's the Plan Commission recommended approval. And that is it.
It is finished, yes.
Are there any requests for future gen items? I will recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session, as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:13 PM.
Notice is hereby given, sorry. Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance to the following provisions. Rural Property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.078. We are now in executive session.